Thank you, everybody, for your patience. We are just logging everybody in and we will get started as soon as we can.
All right.
Hi.
And can you hear me now? Okay.
Just copy and paste it. Can you someone just copy? Hold on one second. I'm sorry.
Mitch, can you hear me?
Yes, Joe, I can hear you.
I have to sign off promptly at 5 o'clock.
Okay, we're gonna get you in before 5:00. If we've got to skip around.
Okay, thank you.
Mitch?
Yes, Dan.
I don't want to join the crowd, but I'll also go in for 50.
Thank you very much, Dan.
Mitch, if I knew people were going to match me, I'd have given 100.
Maybe just as a reminder, we are in public session, folks.
Right, thank you. Well, it just shows everyone in the public session how generous our trustees.
That's right.
Oh, wow. And I'm gonna wait for you to tell me when we should start.
Yep, we're just logging people in. Bear with us for one second. Okay. All right, I think we are probably 35. Yeah, I think we are okay to get started. No, I don't. We're okay to get started, Mitch.
Okay, great. Okay, we are, this is a public board meeting for December 8th for Temple University. Unfortunately, we are continuing to do a video conference meeting and hopefully soon we'll be able to do this in person. It is my pleasure to introduce our president for the president's report, Dick Engler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the outset, I want to welcome Dr. Tanya Garcia, Deputy Secretary and Commissioner for Post-Secondary in Higher Education, joining us today. And we want to thank you, Madam Commissioner, for everything that you do and for everything that the state does, the Commonwealth for Temple University. It's a great partnership, and thank you so much.
Thank you, President Engler. It's a pleasure to be here, and I look forward to our work together.
Thank you. And let me take a few minutes to remember in public session two late trustees who have served very well, both this university and this city. Ron Donatucci passed away in November after a long illness. A Philadelphia native, Ron graduated from Temple in 1970 with a bachelor's degree from the College of Liberal Arts. Always an advocate for Temple, he returned to the university as a member of this Board of Trustees in 2006. He has served continuously since then, most recently as co-chair of the Government Relations and External Affairs Committee of this Board. He was also a member of the Board of Directors of Temple University Health System. He was president of the Board of Directors of the Board of City Trusts, and he was chair of the Board of Will's Eye Hospital. A longtime public servant, Ron had most recently served for nearly four decades as Philadelphia's Register of Wills. He also held a number of positions in city government over the decades and was elected a member of the Pennsylvania House of Representatives in 1977 and 1979. A longtime friend of this university, he built strong relationships throughout Temple and all of Philadelphia. He was always willing to help out anyone in need, and we are forever grateful to him for his loyalty and his service. I think Bill Bergman summed it up nicely when he said that Ron was a cheerleader for every organization he was involved in, and he was certainly a cheerleader for Temple. I know we will keep Ron's wife, Stephanie, and the entire Donatucci family in our thoughts and prayers. I also want to take a moment to remember James Stanley White, who died last Tuesday. During a distinguished lifetime, Jim served his country, his adopted city of Philadelphia, and Temple University with great honor. Jim's record of achievement is too extensive to detail here. Let me just offer a few highlights. He entered the U.S. Army after college and became a decorated veteran of the Vietnam War, rising through the ranks to become a colonel before retiring in 1977 after 23 years. Jim went on, of course, to hold several roles in Philadelphia's government, working with the city for 14 years. Under then-mayor Wilson Begood, Jim was named the city's managing director, which is the highest-appointed position in city government. In 1991, Jim became Temple's executive vice president. Until 1999, he was influential in helping to revitalize and really enact President Leah Corrises and this board's vision to make Temple a more residential university. Jim always treated everyone with respect. He championed excellence, affordability, diversity, access for students, and partnerships with our neighbors. The James S. White Residence Hall was named for him to recognize his great efforts. He became a member of the Boards of the Board of Trustees of this university and served as a trustee until 2016. I know we will all keep Jim's wife, Juanita, and the entire White family in our thoughts and prayers. The legacy of these two giants not only is visible in Temple today, but also will shape our university for generations in the future. I also want to highlight two other trustees for whom 2020 is a special year. Trustee Nelson Diaz has been a trailblazer all his life. We are all proud that in October, he was given the Gus Garcia Lifetime Achievement Award at Aldia's Top Lawyers Forum. And for Nelson, it's been quite a year because he earlier this year received a prestigious 2020 National Hispanic Hero Award from the United States Hispanic Leadership Institute. Congratulations, trustee Diaz. You've always been our hero. And speaking of heroes, I also want to congratulate trustee Steve Charles. A few days ago, the Charles Library received the 2020 Design Excellence Excellence Award from the Philadelphia Chapter of the American Institute of Architects. This war, this award came after, earlier this year, the library received the 2020 Library Interior Design Award of the American Library Association and the International Interior Design Association. Thank you, trustee Charles, for your support for this wonderful facility. Let me talk about some other Temple heroes. No person more embodies the energy and the commitment of our health system to North Philadelphia than Amy Goldberg, the chair of our Department of Surgery. Last month, she was given the Philadelphia Award in recognition of her outstanding impact on the youth of North Philadelphia, especially for her work combating gun violence, supporting the victims of violence, and mounting youth programs such as Cradle to Grave and Turning Point. Both of these programs have won national praise. There are more Temple heroes in the news lately. Research produced by a team led by Professor Kamel Kalili and Associate Professor Tricia Burdo demonstrates how CRISPR technology is bringing us closer to a cure for HIV/AIDS. It was announced last week that this team successfully removed viral DNA from primates, a crucial step on the road to a cure for HIV. This break, this breakthrough is the first experiment of its kind and the culmination of years of work. It is also another example of the dedication of Temple researchers to making a positive impact on the lives of people here in Philadelphia and around the world. Let me now shift from speaking about individual heroes and say a few words about the heroism of the Temple community as a whole. When the pandemic hit, there were some who despaired over the future of teaching and learning. Many of us did not agree. Even in the midst of a terrific pandemic, our faculty and students have risen to the occasion. The vital mission of Temple University continues. Classes are being held, research is ongoing, students are asking questions and completing assignments and graduating. It isn't easy, but it's working. And it's working because of our talented faculty, students, and staff in close collaboration. Today is now toward the end of the semester, the first of two study days. Finals will begin later this week. I want to thank all of you, especially our outstanding faculty, for your commitment to Temple and its mission. Let me add that while it's difficult to single out any one group, I knew, I know that the pandemic has especially hit our student athletes hard. Nonetheless, there's a bright spot here, too. A recent release of data by the NCAA shows that Temple student athletes have earned a record-setting 91% graduation success rate, a score that tops our previous high mark set last year by one point. This is the sixth straight year that Temple athletic teams have recorded an overall graduation success rate of 85% or higher, a remarkable achievement. As Acting Director of Athletics Fran Dumphy said last week, graduating student athletes is the prime mission of any institution, and we take great pride in this accomplishment. So you see, there are many reasons for all of us to be both thankful and optimistic about the future. Here is one final one. We have had to date an approximate 12% increase in undergraduate admissions early action candidates. That is a very clear indicator of what we hope to see in fall 2021. These early action students are more ethically and more geographically diverse than in the past, with an increase in students of color and an increase of students from outside of Pennsylvania. The Temple message is a powerful one, and it is having an impact, even in the midst of a pandemic. So as we come to the end of this tumultuous year, my wish for all of us is that we look forward, look forward to a year that brings new opportunities for optimism, not just for Temple, but for our city, our nation, and our world. That, that concludes my remarks. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, for all you do. You are amazing. May you and all your families and loved ones have the happiest of holidays and a wonderful, wonderful 2021. Thank you.
Thank you, Dick. Thank you very much. Let's move on to the approval of the minutes of October 13th, 2020.
So moved. So moved.
Okay. Having first and a second. Any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. I just lost my screen. The next one is standing reports for the trustees affairs. Trustee O'Connor.
Stand there. I mean, is there?
I'll do it, Pat, if you want. You're welcome. So Recommendation for Action: Reappointment to the Board of Directors of Temple University Health System that the Board of Trustees, upon the recommendation of the Committee on Trustee Affairs and the Board of Directors of Temple University Health System, reappoint the following individuals to the Board of Directors of TUHS, each for a three-year term in accordance with the bylaws. Stephen G. Charles, Sonder Harmon Weiss, Charles Lockyer, and Solomon Lue.
I'll move it.
So moved.
Having a move, motion, motion, first and second, any discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving to the Executive Committee. Trustee Phil Richards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Executive Committee met, and there's one recommendation for action that has to do with the borrowing authority for the first quarter of 2021. Recommendation is that the Board of Trustees authorize the officers to borrow, for operating purposes of the university, $30 million on terms, which the officers believe best for the university. Such authority to cover the period from January 1st, 2021, through March 31st, 2021, has set forth an Agenda Reference Number Three, an ISO move.
Second.
Second.
I think it moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving, moving to the Alumni Relations and Development Committee, trustee Barrett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Board, upon the recommendation of the ARDC and the GAC, approve the naming of a simulation room in the Medical Education and Research Building at the Lewis Katz School of Medicine, as set forth in Agenda Reference Five. Second.
Second.
Having a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, trustee Barrett. Moving to Academic Affairs, trustee Marshall.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, the report of the Academic Affairs Committee may be found at item six on the agenda. We do have some recommendations for action. Mr. Chairman, I move that the Academic Affairs Committee approve the recommendation, excuse me, that the Board approve the recommendation to reorganize the departments in the Lewis Katz School of Medicine and redesignate or transfer the tenure faculty, as further set forth in Agenda Reference and below.
Moved, so moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, Agenda Item Eight, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the recommendation of the Academic Affairs Committee that the officers be authorized to establish the Bachelor of General Studies in General Studies, University College, and set forth further in Agenda Reference Eight.
Second.
Having a motion moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, next item is Agenda Reference Nine, and I move that the Board of Trustees approve the recommendation of the Academic Affairs Committee that the officers be authorized to establish the Master of Science in Education in Professional Health Education with an optional concentration scholarship of teaching and learning in health-based instruction in the College of Education and Human Development, as further set forth in Agenda Reference Nine.
Second.
Having a motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number 10, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the recommendation of the Academic Affairs Committee that the officers be authorized to establish and rename various curricula in the School of Sport, Tourism, and Hospitality Management, as further set forth in Agenda References Ten and below.
Second.
Having a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Number, item number 11, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the recommendation of the Academic Affairs Committee that the officers be authorized to restructure the minor in mathematics in the College of Science and Technology, as further set forth in Agenda Reference Eleven.
Second.
Having a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number 12, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the recommendation of the Academic Affairs Committee that the officers be authorized to restructure the Master of Science in Conflict and Communication in the Klein College of Media and Communication, as set forth further in Agenda Reference Number Twelve.
Second.
Having a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes the report of the Academic Affairs Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Marshall. Let's move to the Facilities Committee. Trustee Cardino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have four recommendations for action today. I move that the Board of Trustees approve the recommendation of the Facilities Committee that the officers be authorized to proceed with the TASB relocation Phase Three at a project cost not to exceed $11,593,600. I so move.
Second.
Having a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Trustees approve the recommendation of the Facilities Committee that the officers be authorized to proceed with the Biology Life Sciences Building roof replacement project at a cost not to exceed $1,650,000.
Second.
Having a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Trustees approve the recommendation of Facilities Committee that the officers be authorized to proceed with the Main and Health Sciences Center campus animal facility improvement project at a cost not to exceed $1,637,560.
Second.
A motion and a second. All the, any, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the recommendation of the Facilities Committee that the officers be authorized to proceed with the Mitten Hall main roof replacement project at a cost not to exceed $1,045,000. I so move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, trustee Cardizo, Cardino. Okay, let's move to Athletic Committee. Trustee Mills.
Trustee Mills is not on the phone right now, so if it's okay with you, I'll just read this into the record, that the report for information can be found at Agenda, or at tab 18.
Thank you. Audit Committee, trustee Larkin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Audit Committee met regularly scheduled time last month. We have no items to report. Our report is in the back of the, in the binder.
Thank you. Budget and Finance, trustee Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The report of the Budget and Finance Committee is under reference 20.
Thank you, trustee Gould. Moving to Committee on Strategic Direction and Long-Term Planning, trustee Charles.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Committee on Strategic Direction and Long-Range Planning met on November 17th, received an update on the progress of the strategic planning process, as noted in Agenda Reference 21.
Thank you, trustee Charles. Compliance Committee, trustee Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Compliance Committee met yesterday to review various legal matters and receive a compliance program review and update. The quarterly report of the committee can be found at Agenda Reference 22, and there are no action items. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, trustee Reed. Moving to Government Relations and External Affairs, trustee Larkin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Government Relations and External Affairs met yesterday. We discussed various items at the state, federal, and local level. Our report can be found on tab 23. We have no action items at this time.
Thank you, trustee Larkin. Research Committee, trustee Muller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Research Committee met this, this afternoon and received a comprehensive report from our Vice President of Research Administration. There are no action items, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Moving to Student Life and Diversity Committee, trustee Diaz.
Trustee Diaz's connection isn't working, so let me read this one as well, if you're okay with that. The committee met yesterday, December the 7th, for a briefing, and the report for information can be found at tab 25.
Thank you. Moving to the Health System, trustee Marshall.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The report of the Temple University Health System may be found at Agenda Item 26. Mr. Chairman, there are no recommendations for action for this meeting. That concludes the report of the Temple University Health System. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to the Officers' Report, Treasurer's Report, Ken Kaiser.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The recommendation is that the investment reports for the three months ended September 30th, 2020, and grants and contracts awarded between July 1, 2020 and September 30th, 2020 be received. Said report being included and identified as set forth in Agenda Reference 27.
So moved.
Second.
Is that a motion? Yes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. Moving to the guest speakers, it's my pleasure to introduce Rafael. I've gotten to know him very well. He's part of this search committee for the, for the president, and I've enjoyed getting to know him and, and really think that his insight for our committee on the search committee has been very insightful and helpful. So Rafael.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. The faculty in, during this semester has been basically dealing with one issue, which is how to do what we generally do under the situations of a universal pandemic like COVID. It has been a lot of hard work, and most of our faculty have not only stepped up to the plate, but gone above and beyond, I think, their usual excellent performance. And I'm glad to say that the semester is over, and we have done the best for our students, and we have taught our classes, and we have moved our, our shared mission forward during this semester, and we look forward to a better time next semester. As Chairman Morgan has indicated, the faculty has also been working with the Presidential Search Committee, and we have hosted three different town halls with the faculty and the search committee and search firm that were, you know, quite well-attended and gave us some really good data. And we've also had a survey that has been sent to the faculty, and I understand that there has been a substantial response with, again, good information for the committee to consider. And other than that, Mr. Chairman, what I would like to do is, on behalf of the faculty, to wish everyone in this meeting a healthy to wish everyone in this meeting a healthy and happy holiday season. I know that we have all been working, not only the faculty, very hard under extraordinary circumstances in the last few months. And again, I think we're all looking forward to a better 2021. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Raphael. President of Student Government, Quinn, who is also on our search committee, and I've really gotten to know Quinn very well and enjoyed working with him as well on the search committee. Quinn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon, everyone. I hope everyone had a safe Thanksgiving. As we approach the end of the semester, I wanted to use my time today to briefly highlight and report back on some of the work student government has been able to conduct over the past few months within this virtual setting and shed light on some of the student engagement that has taken place over the past few months as a result of the work that you all and the rest of university administration puts into maintaining our Temple community. Firstly, over the summer, we were able to work with the Office of the President to encourage the university to divest from the Philadelphia Police Foundation in light of numerous instances of police brutality, some of which were committed against Temple students. In August, we created a student pledge for COVID-19 to ensure students took some responsibility to follow Temple's four health pillars. Currently, we are engaged in conversations to help build a diversity, equity, and inclusion module for incoming students at Temple University. Our Chief of Staff, Lawrence Christopher, has dedicated much time to work with university administrators to help with the university investigation into ways students can be held accountable for hate speech on campus while still upholding the First Amendment. We also created a scholarship to aid students of marginalized identities in hopes of diversifying the health and public health care workforces to address various health disparities like COVID-19. We were able to provide $400,000 scholarships to students in the College of Public Health. We were able to work with the Office of the Provost to encourage the university to extend their credit, no-credit option, and all of this work was on top of the wonderful work that has been put in by our numerous directors, including running biweekly town halls, hosting block cleanups, holding book donation drives, and collaborating with university offices for things such as the Office of Community Relations Thanksgiving giveaway and Campus Safety's Halloween candy giveaways. All of these advocacy efforts are just my perspective from one student organization, while many others continue to find ways to operate and support one another virtually. While this semester and on a larger level this year has caused numerous tensions, stresses, and difficulties that cannot be understated, one thing has been proven. No matter the circumstances, Temple owls and specifically Temple student body will continue to find ways to build community and relentlessly advocate for a better future. As we close out this turbulent year that has been 2020, I thank you, all of you, for your continuing work to better the Temple community, and as we look to the new year, I look forward to continuing to work with you all as new issues arise. Thank you all, and I hope everyone has a safe and restful holiday season.
Thank you, Quinn. We are, that concludes our agenda. Is there any old or new business? Sure, I'd like to also wish everyone a happy and healthy holiday season and a new year. I only wish that we will be able to have a holiday party this time next year in person on campus where we can actually shake hands and kiss each other. So everyone stay healthy. I think the light is at the end of the tunnel. I think that hopefully we will all get vaccinated in the next six months and be able to interact like we have done in the past. So it's my privilege to be the Chair of Temple University. It's been a really crazy year. But every day I spend on Temple University is a day I feel great about, you know, what we do with our students and the lives that we change. So everyone, please stay safe. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Thank you, everyone.